Good evening. It's good to see everybody here. Welcome to our October Board Meeting. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that there's a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This time, you please rise for the pledges and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, with us this evening, we have David Spalding from Calvary Baptist Church will offer us an opening prayer. Come on up to the podium. Thank you for being here.
I invite you to join me in prayer. Les invito que me acompañen en oración. Almighty God who reigns in glory, we thank you for your goodness and your grace, your love and mercy. Amado Dios que reina en gloria, damos gracias señor por tu amor, tu misericordia y tu fidelidad hacia nosotros. Damos gracias señor por este grupo de hombres y mujeres que han dedicado su vida para poder servir al distrito escolar de Bastrop. We thank you for the men and women here that are representing and being able to serve BISD. We know that this is our greatest resource in our youth. We pray that you would give them guidance, that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them discernment. Damos gracias señor porque le pedimos que tú les des, señor, a cada uno de ellos discernimiento, que les des, señor, sabiduría y que ellos puedan hacer lo mejor para nuestro mejor recurso que son nuestros hijos. Father God, we pray this in the name of Jesus and the number of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. God, appreciate it. Please be seated. All right, this time, we will have our student speaker on Character Education Trade for October, which is responsibility. Superintendent Edwards, would you please introduce our speaker for this evening?
Yes, I would. I'd like to invite Amir Shawara to come up to the front here. There's Amir. Good to see you, Amir. Amir is an eighth grade student at Bastrop Middle School. He is the son of Zara and Amir Shawara. He is a member of the Bastrop Middle School Bear Tales and Pa's Technical Theater Crew, a member of BMS, let's talk about it, Podcast Club, like it, and a member of National Junior Honesty Society. This is unique, Amir, and I appreciate this. In his free time, he enjoys making candles and selling them, but lately, he's been too busy with school to do so. So I guess your teachers and Ms. Pearson are really putting it on you, Amir? Well, tell us about responsibility, if you would, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. I want to take a moment to talk about something that's deeply important to me, responsibility. My name is Amir and I'm an eighth grader at Bastrop Middle School. Responsibility is not just a task or a duty, it's a core value that defines who we are and how we move through life. It shapes our character, builds trust with others, and helps us grow into dependable individuals. One of the key reasons responsibility is so important is that it helps build trust with others. When you're responsible, people can count on you, whether that's your peers, teachers, or even your family. Being dependable strengthens the relationships you have because people know they can rely on you to do what's needed. Being responsible also means holding yourself accountable. This is a lesson I learned firsthand in seventh grade when I didn't finish my math homework on time. When the teacher graded it, I received a low grade for the last six weeks. That one slip-up caused me to fall off the A honor roll and into the AB honor roll. It was a tough lesson, but it showed me that every action has consequences and I need to take ownership of my work. Responsibility isn't something that affects your grades, it's a quality that shapes who you are. It teaches you to take control of your life and decisions, whether that's managing your time, prioritizing your tasks. Being responsible will help you in the future, whether that's securing a job or maintaining a strong relationship or simply being someone that others can trust. In conclusion, responsibility is more than just doing what's expected of you. It's about shaping who you are and who you want to become. Each responsible choice you make, no matter how small, is like laying a brick in the foundation of your future. Whether it's finishing that homework assignment or showing up on time or treating others with respect, these actions build the kind of person who's dependable, trustworthy, and ready to succeed in life. Thank you for this opportunity.
Well done, Amir. Did anyone besides your mom and dad come with you?
Oh, I have my sister with me and my grandpa.
Would you introduce them, please?
So, my sister, her name's Varan, and there's my grandpa.
His name's Kareem.
Well, thank you all for coming so much. No one has a gift for you? And Amir, I can tell you that Lee Raspberry, Ms. Pearson, Dr. Lee, and myself have been accountable to your responsibility as we've worked through the project with you and your colleagues. Remember when you stopped at the steam fest about the water fountains? Proud to say we'll be replacing the water fountains at BMS.
Thank you.
So, thank you for being so responsible. You held us accountable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Each month, I have the privilege of meeting with high school students to hear their concerns and how we can improve our schools throughout the school district. And so, we're one of the few school districts that invites them to sit in consultation with the school board. And tonight, representing all three high schools on our own, is Isabella Molina Conrady. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. She's the proud daughter of, I think they're the proud parents of, probably.
Absolutely.
Of Mr. Conrady, our principal at Circa. And where's your mom? I saw her. There you are. Could you introduce yourself, please? Where you are, what you plan to do in the future?
So, like you said, my name is Isabella Conrady. I go to Colorado River Collegiate Academy. Right now, I'm working on my pre-med associates and after high school, I plan to go to university, study biology, to become a pediatrician.
Awesome.
Thank you for that. All right, I've told the board to take it easy, no hard questions for you, anything like that, okay? I also saw, where's Jennifer Everly? Would you just stand up very briefly?
Right here.
I'm so used to seeing her out here. I'd like to introduce the board to Jennifer Everly, our new chief academic officer. We're so proud to have her here. Hiring one from within is very gratifying as you see your people from inside grow and we have such a seamless transition. So, Jennifer, welcome to the table.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. All right, now, we'll move into our special presentations and recognitions. Bullying Prevention Month presentation, and that's from the Family Crisis Center of Bastrop Youth Advisory Board. Who do we have here this evening? Welcome, come on up.
And for all other presenters, they brought gifts, so if you are presenting, gifts are accepted.
Ladies, would you all please introduce yourselves?
My name is Haley. I attend Colorado River Collegiate Academy.
And I'm Samantha and I attend Bastrop High School.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Haley.
My name's Samantha.
And we are both so pleased to be here with you today. We want to take this time to talk about some issues we are both passionate about advocating for. Samantha and I are both representing students in the Bastrop Independent School District. I attend Colorado River Collegiate Academy and she attends Bastrop High School. Even though we attend different schools, we still notice a common and severe issue in our everyday lives, and that's bullying. We're here today as the presidents of the Bastrop Family Crisis Center's Youth Advisory Board. The YAB is dedicated to spreading information to our peers about bullying, healthy relationships, domestic violence, and so much more. One thing you may or may not know is that October is actually Bullying Prevention and Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we, as Youth Advisory Board leaders, are dedicated students and are here to ensure that we can give as much information as possible about these two topics to stop it before it starts and to mend what has already been done. Bullying is defined as when a person or people repeatedly and intentionally use words or actions against someone or a group of people to cause distress and risk their well-being. Did you know that one in five students report that they've been bullied according to the National Bullying Prevention Center? That's 20% of students, and I'd like to point out that's only the ones that feel comfortable speaking out. Bullying not only affects a person's mental health, but also negatively affects a student's educational journey. I'm a living example of this. When I started middle school, my family began to move around a lot. I encountered many challenges during that time, one of them being that I never really had consistent friends. When my family moved down to Cameron, Texas, I quickly realized that I was the only kid at the school that looked like me. I've always been teased about having red hair and freckles, and there it was no different. I've always loved school, especially in my younger years, but when I began to hear mean comments being made about me, saw notes being passed around, and was constantly receiving harmful judgment from my peers simply because of how I looked, my grades and my involvement in school faltered. I would even pretend to be sick to get out of class. I also stopped aiming for good grades and wanted nothing to do at school plays or period-oriented events. Even when I was finally pulled into the counselor's office due to missing so many days and failing so many classes, I thought I would use the chance to tell them what was happening to me, and some of you might be able to guess what happened. I told my counselor that I was being bullied and she promised that she would do something about it, but she merely had a brief conversation with the students about the bullying situation and sent them right back to class. There was no consequences for their actions, no secrecy to what I told her, so of course the bullying continued and the target on my back grew even larger. I eventually was pulled out of school because I couldn't even get myself up in the morning to go. My family and I moved back here to Bastrop a few weeks later, and this is why adult support is so crucial to the issue of bullying. Adults are the people who children look up to. They're the ones who can do something to help a struggling child. The younger population can only do so much before they need help. That's when they need help from an adult, whether to be a parent, teacher, or even the lady you see walking down the street every morning. A child may not understand what writing harmful things in a notebook is in a joke. We need people we idolize and trust to teach us the difference between friends and bullies, also how to prevent it from escalating, and how to address the situation. However, this could only work if the youth felt believed by an adult. As young and vulnerable kids, we need to be taught trust and help. If we don't have that, then who will help the next generation? Bullying can lead straight to someone becoming a domestic abuser. It is proven that it's four times more likely that someone abused or bullied someone in high school or elementary or kindergarten will grow up to be a domestic abuser. The one being bullied, the bully, and even the bystander can be a result of the violence seen in the future. This is why it's so important that we stop it while it's early, before we leave. Before we leave, we would like to share a few statistics, and this is mainly regarding the bullying seen in the high school and in the middle school today. Over 50% of children are targeted by cyberbullying. 26.5% of American teenagers have experienced cyberbullying in the last 30 days. 27% of bullied students indicate that bullying harms how they feel about themselves, 19% says it harms their relationship with their friends and family, and 14% says it affects their physical health. Now, the question is, what can we do to lower these numbers? How can we work together to prevent violence in our world today, tomorrow, and forever after that? Please join us in stopping our mission with bullying. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to address BISCs on these issues and for listening to us today.
All right, ladies, thank you all very much for being here. Don't leave yet. Thank you for sharing your story, and it means a lot. And we have all the principals here in the room, and you have your school board here. And I know that we've taken some measures, the administration has, in regards to minimizing cyberbullying, possibly with not being able to either have cell phones at school or limit them during the class time, which should help. Are there any other recommendations that you have for us?
I know that my school personally, because we're so small, we have a lot of student-led organizations, and one of them is the Mental Health Advocacy Club. And we have a couple of fairs regarding that where we have different people come and do booths in our gym. And not only do we participate in that, Genesis High School also participates in that. And that's, I feel, you know, one of the most opening displays of affection that we can do for our schools, showing them that there's opportunities for them to have and to use and to need.
So that might be something that would be good down at the middle school level, possibly?
I think so, too.
I also believe educating the younger population on what cyberbullying is, because they may not understand that leaving a hurtful comment or posting something about someone isn't going to detrimentally hurt the other person that they're targeting. And I believe that will lead to future, like, high schoolers thinking it's okay to go on to other people's Instagrams or Snapchats and posting all this horrid information about them and saying such horrid things where it's hard for them to want to go to school at all anymore.
Great. And don't leave yet. Isabella, you have any thoughts?
I agree with, like, getting kids included into stuff because in our school, since it's so small, like Haley was saying, the amount of involvement really helps kids to be able to find, like, a group of people they feel really comfortable in. So, and maybe the middle school, especially because they're younger, to get them involved, help them, like, have their voice to speak out on topics like this and other topics.
Fantastic. Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate you all coming up, took a lot of courage, and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I believe we also have a video to share with y'all.
Fantastic.
Oh, is it this thing? Okay, there we go.
Thank you again for standing up and speaking.
Yes.
All right, moving along to number two, Advanced Placement Scholarships. Jennifer Everly, our chief academic officer, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, school board, Mr. Edwards. I am here to present our Advanced Placement Scholars for this year. So every fall, the college board recognized high school students who have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through their performance on multiple advanced placement exams. This year, we have, maybe? Okay, this year, we have 46 students in grades 11 and 12 who've received the title of AP Scholar. So if you're in the audience and you've received an AP Scholar Award, would you go ahead and come join us up front, please? These students are from, as you see on the screen, Bastrop High School, Cedar Creek High School, and Circa. Thank you, guys. Just to give you a little more information regarding the different levels and types of AP Scholars, 24 of these students have been recognized as AP Scholars by receiving scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. 19 of them have reached the level of AP Scholars with Honors, which is an average of a 3.25 on four or more of these AP exams. We also have three students that I'd like to recognize tonight, Landon Buckner, Kyle Gertz, and John Goslink, who have been awarded AP Scholars with Distinctions, meaning they're reaching an average of at least a 3.5 on five or more advanced placement exams. So if you'd join me in congratulating all of our AP Scholars. So we are so proud of the hard work and dedication that these students have shown as they've worked to reach this achievement. And we'd also like to thank their families, as well as teachers and principals that have helped instill and continue this learning and growth within them. And we can't wait to see what you guys accomplish next. Thank you. Good job, guys.
Congratulations. All right, moving along to number three, to our adult superstars here. We're going to recognize the Bastrop ISD principals, and our presenter will be Superintendent Edwards.
Yes, we are. They are superstars, and it's good to see you all sitting on the front row as we recognize you, trying to hide in the back. But it is principal appreciation, but, you know, as I sit here and I look out and I think about everything that we do, I'm not sure there's enough appreciation and or thanks for each of one of you, our outstanding principals, for all that you've done, all that you continue to do, for your staff, your parents, and most importantly, for all of our students. You know, we've had our accountability meetings, and hearing your plans have just been outstanding. Your vision, I can personally attest to your tireless effort, your passion for your schools is apparent every time we have the privilege of visiting your campuses or watching you speak and interact with teachers and students alike. You do such an incredible job, and I just, on behalf of all of us, I want to thank you for that. You do an incredible job of listening, responding, and to all the demands that this position requires. And they seem endless at times, and I recognize that, but we appreciate you. And the best part about it is you keep us all excited about the continuous improvement of our element, all of our schools, our elementaries, our middles, and our high schools. So, thank you for what you do. And we're going to have Cassie come up, we'll recognize you a little bit more. But again, sincerely, on behalf of me, our administration, and of course, our school board, thank you.
All right, so as Mr. Edwards said, it's October and it's National Principals Month, and y'all do so much for us every single day and night and evening and weekend and holiday, and I'm sure on your vacations, too. So, thank you for that. We appreciate you this month, but also every month of the year, so thank you so much. Before we introduce y'all, we have a little surprise. We partnered with each of your campuses to put together a special video just to say thank you and just how much we appreciate and value you.
Yes, Michelle, to embarrass you.
If your principal had a superpower, what superpower would she have?
Flying power, so she could fly around the school. Mine would be to be really smart, but if somebody is really, really frustrated, she will know what to do and coming down.
If your principal could have any superpower, what do you think it would be and why?
Technology. Because she's smart.
So if your principal could have any superpower, what do you think it would be?
Leadership.
Why?
Because she's smart.
What is the funniest thing you've seen your principal do?
When she just says, "This is cruel, baby." With her, "Oh, this stuff, that's her pocket."
If your principal could have any job in the world besides being a principal, what do you think it would be?
I don't know if this would be her favorite job or her first pick, but I think security because at the football game, whenever the lights went blacked out, one of the football players, one of my best friends, ran up into the stand and she had to chase him down and bring him back down in the middle of the football game. So, I think she'd be a good security officer.
If your principal could be any animal, what do you think she would be and why?
Out of all the animals in the world, would be a lion because she's so fierce and she's a leader and she's proven herself that she's the alpha and that no one can stand up to her.
The thing I would like to think of my principal for is always working hard to make our campus a better place, and I think we strive to become better students and better people.
What is the funniest thing you've seen your principal do?
Her making a video that says, "Give me my money."
What do you think she does on her day off?
Go clubbing.
I would say thank you for creating a good environment and making our program so nice and giving us all these fancy things and getting everything together for us and making sure we have a nice school and a good year.
We love our principal because she helps us with this school.
She made this school for us to learn.
She is kind and generous.
She is pretty and kind.
She puts her time and work into this school for us.
The principal is so good. She teaches us how to be nice and be good.
And she gives me lollipops and strawberry when I go home.
Because of you, you're able to have better opportunities, you being able to go to certain campuses.
What's the funniest thing you've ever seen your principal do?
When she got pied in the face.
What does your principal do?
She likes to walk around. She likes to walk around and help people. And I make this.
Aw, that's sweet. If your principal could have any job in the world besides being a principal, what do you think it would be?
Help, like, with schools and, like, the construction and stuff.
You think she'd be a construction worker?
Yeah, like, do, like, this form of, like, learn or what to build.
What do you think your principal does?
She runs the school grant meet and she takes care of the kids and she does a bunch of jobs.
What do you think she does on her day off?
I think she sleeps some, of course. She probably drinks coffee and maybe reads a book.
What kind of job do you think your principal would do if she wasn't a principal?
I mean, what I got to do for me.
What do you think your principal does on her days off?
I'm still in school.
You think she still stays in school?
If our principal could be any animal in the world, what do you think?
If our principal could be any animal in the world, what do you think she would be?
Um, a chicken noodle for us.
What do you think our principal does on her day off when she's not at school? What do you think she does?
I think that she would just play with her kids, and she would go to the park and play with her kids, with her son and her daughter. I think that's a good plan to do for her day off.
Everything he does does not go unnoticed, and our principal really does do everything, from mopping the floor to serving lunches to talking to parents to helping out students.
You make a difference, and we're grateful for all that you do. Your leadership inspires us to give our best every day. Thank you for always putting students first.
Thank you for everything you do for our campus.
You make our school a great place to be.
You make a difference, and we're grateful for all that you do.
Thank you. We like putting kids in videos because they're honest, so we try not to censor it too much. So at this time, I'd like to invite all of our elementary campus principals to come forward. I'm going to call you each by name, and then whenever you come up, go ahead and stay up, and y'all can leave your little gift baskets under your chair. You don't have to take them with you. And then afterwards, we'll take a group photo of all of our elementary principals first together. So first, we have Laura Faircloth from Blue Bonnet Elementary School. Dr. Tammy Hernandez, Principal of Cedar Creek Elementary. Wendy Burnett, Principal of Emile Elementary. Leslie Ringstaff, Principal of Lost Pines Elementary. Emily Allen, Mina Elementary. Katie Felker, Red Rock Elementary. And then we also wanted to recognize Dr. Augustina Lozano, Principal of Camino Real, and Kristy Kaismore, Principal of Colony Oaks Elementary. They couldn't be here tonight, so thank y'all so much. Principals, you guys move down this way in the center. The center, move down this way in the center. Here, the center is right here. Keep going, that way. There you go.
Second row, I need to, yeah.
Emily.
Okay, okay. Right here, guys, we'll take a few. And I'm going to do one more.
Thank you all. Okay, and now, we're going to do the same thing with our secondary principals. If we can, there we go. All right, so first, we have Michelle Nicholas, Bastrop Intermediate. Heather Christie, Cedar Creek Intermediate. Tiffany Pearson, Bastrop Middle School. Riza Cooper, Cedar Creek Middle School. And happy birthday. Crystal Gabriel, Bastrop High School. Casey Stagman, Cedar Creek High School. Martin Conrory, I can never say your name, Conrory, both Colorado River Collegiate Academy and Genesis High School. And Zach Allison Gateway. All right, and we'll get a photo of y'all also. You look perfectly. That may not work. Martin and Zach are too tall.
Kelly's good. Here, guys. Same thing, one more. Thank you.
All right, and then, if y'all want to grab y'all's little gift bags, so you don't have to leave them in here, and y'all can go out, and we'll get a group photo of all of y'all. Chris will go and take that.
Leave just yet. On behalf of the board, it was great to see y'all smile, great to see you laugh, okay? We see weekly the agendas of the principals' meetings and things like that, and all that y'all are doing and how you're doing it, and we're here to support you. We believe in you. We want to thank you for your hard work. We know it's tough. We really do. And so, things are evolving, they're evolving fast, and if the state's not shoving it down our throats, we're having to adapt just to stay up to be able to educate kids. And so, anyways, thank you from the bottom of our heart, on behalf of this board, for everything that each and every one of you do. Thank you.
Class dismissed.
All right, moving along, there was no one that signed up for open forum this evening, so that'll take us to our public hearing, which is a presentation and public hearing on the state compensatory education funds. Our presenter is Kendra Mock, Director of Leadership Development and School Improvement. This is a public hearing on the state compensatory...
Compensatory.
...education funds. Following the presentation, please invite the audience to present and any questions that they may have. So, Ms. Mock, thank you for being here.
Thanks. Good evening, Mr. Edwards and School Board members. Tonight, we are going to review the State Compensatory Education Student Achievement, Staffing, and Programming for BISD for the 23-24 school year. State Compensatory Education, or State CompEd, is for supplemental programs and services specific to students who are identified as at risk of dropping out of school. This funding is designed to increase academic achievement for this student group, and costs are documented in either district or campus improvement plans. What you see on this slide are the 15 indicators that define whether a student is identified as at risk. These indicators are closely monitored by campus staff all year long, as there are some indicators where students could qualify as at risk at any time. In reading through these indicators, it's pretty clear that these circumstances could easily affect a student's academic achievement, especially if you consider that many of our students might qualify as at risk under more than one indicator. This is a comparison of the number of at-risk students identified in BISD for the past three years. As you can see, these numbers have increased slightly for the 23-24 school year, but still, the past few years, over 70% of our students were identified with at least one of the indicators that we saw on the previous slide. Now, the next two slides you're going to see contain STAR 3 through 8 and EOC data at the state level, the entire district, and our at-risk-only students. This particular slide examines reading, language arts, and mathematics. So as you can see, the state of Texas saw declines in student achievement, and our data followed suit. So as a reminder, in reading, language arts, we noticed an increase in students scoring below expectations. Writing assessments evaluated using AI or artificial intelligence showed lower performance levels than usual in BISD and statewide. Additionally, some recent updates to the STAR test include a shift to 100% online assessments, which may pose some difficulties for elementary students, particularly with typing written responses. And some staffing challenges and low attendance also affect student achievement. This slide examines science and social studies. These are much smaller student groups than math and reading, and it's important to note here that social studies saw an increase across the district and our at-risk students. So we foresaw that there could possibly be some declines in the 23-24 school year, so we proactively address those things. We made instructional changes, we've applied a differentiated model of professional development, and we've implemented specialized strategies for our students and teachers. And we are anticipating that these changes will show positive results in spring 2025 testing. And when comparing student achievement from fall 2023 to fall 2024, we're already seeing growth in nearly all areas. The funding to address the needs of at-risk students from elementary through middle-school campuses can be found in both staffing and in programming. Response to intervention, tutoring, English language support are evidence-based approaches to addressing the specific needs of our at-risk students. For our secondary campuses, a majority of State CompEd funding goes into personnel that provide intervention, tutoring, credit recovery, and other specialized supports. At the district level, State CompEd dollars 100% fund our Gateway and Genesis campuses. Support for campus behavior, stipends for response to intervention lead teachers, summer school, and supplemental curricular resources are also provided for our at-risk population. Overall, the BISD State CompEd program's desired result is to provide a challenging and meaningful instructional program and service that will close the achievement gap between students at risk of dropping out of school and their peers. So that's a review of 23-24 State CompEd programming. Do we have any questions?
Are there any questions from the public? Are there any questions from, oh, yes, ma'am.
New math curriculum, did that start last year or first year?
In 23-24, that's when we implemented that curriculum fully.
That data dip, could that be...
Well, we saw a decrease across the state, and so other campuses or districts that are using our same curricula also saw that dip. So we're really looking at more of, were students struggling with the testing format or the content? And so that's where the question mark lies there.
One more, Ms. Moore?
So kindergarten readiness is, maybe Ms. Everly wants to state that entire piece.
We have an assessment called circle testing. It's through CLI. It's state-approved, and that's how we measure 3K moving into kinder, and then when they get into kindergarten, we start looking at assessments on foundational reading and math.
Any other questions from the public? Are there any questions from the board?
I had a question. You said that you anticipated a downward trend in the numbers. What, why did you anticipate that?
The previous year, we had seen students struggling. That was the first year with, not across the board, but in some cases where we saw some online testing. And so, again, going back to, do we have a content problem, or do we have an online testing program, like talking to teachers, talking to students? We were foreseeing that there could potentially be some dips, possibly also with a few of the curriculum-based assessments from our previous curriculum. We weren't seeing the achievement that we were expecting, which is another reason why we took on the newer curricular pieces.
In this question, how much is the funding for this? Is this part of the cup that you were talking about?
Yes.
So...
It's 13 and 1/2 million.
Okay, it is 13. And that is part, if Bastrop gives more, the state gives less, such as that?
Yes, it's part of the...
Part of, the formula, the formula, okay. And I have one more, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, because this is a kudo. I looked on the TEA site, as far as the district, and if I read it correctly, the dropout rate for Bastrop is less than 2%?
I don't have that data in front of me right now, but I can verify that and follow up with you.
Okay, okay. I mean, which is awesome, which is great.
Yes. I mean, if that's what was reported on the TPRS system provided by TEA, then I would absolutely go with that. But I'll verify that.
Yeah, which is, I mean, that's when I was looking, okay, I went down a rabbit hole with this one, but it was, it was really, it showed a great effort for you all to do that, and to keep it down to five people, 10 people, that is amazing.
That's part of the goal of this funding.
Yeah.
This last year on this topic, but the at-risk indicators, the percentage that you went over addresses one or more, what do you suspect it really is? Is it two or more? I mean, are there multiple, you know, do we have a higher percentage of more than two or three at least?
You know, I don't have that data, but when I consider some of these indicators, like students that's emergent bilingual, didn't pass the STAR test, doesn't have, maintain that 70 in two or more classes, like I can see that some of these would be much more prolific than perhaps some of the others.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, this will conclude our public hearing, and thank you, Ms. Mock, very much. All right, moving along to our superintendent's reports. The Human Resource Report, as well as Academic, Financial, Facilities and Operations, and Police Department Report, and Safety and Security Report are all for information only, which moves us into our consent agenda.
Yes. Questions, just clarification on that. And I know it was an issue before, but on the hiring of the teachers, do you know how many non-certified teachers do we have now? Okay, has it decreased from last year? Okay. Please, thank you. And then, I have another one for Chief. I meant to ask this last time, but what would this, unfortunately, this last school shooting, what is this district's policies, procedures after an incident like that, an unfortunate incident? What do you all do?
So, you know, people often ask me, "What do we do different?" And I'll be honest, we don't do anything. So our whole focus... Whatever. The backside. Most of all, we... Doesn't... But those...
But I would say this, after an incident like that, we do sit down and kind of review thereafter action and just test it against ours to see if there's things that we can adjust, but like Chief says, it's an everyday thing. I mean, we, you, things change, especially you're doing construction, different doorways get closed, you know, you're changing flows of patterns, so it's an everyday, ongoing process.
And Chief, it's probably fair to say, this continues through the holidays, it continues through the summertime. There's a lot of staff, there's a lot of community members that forward information to them, that they find social media, it could be a picture that's either inappropriate or something that's threatening that they're investigating, looking into, so it's, and it's 24 hours. Right.
Thank you. And then just something else that while going through it, and I think, Mr. Edwards, you might be able to help me with this, there seems to be a lot of awards and recognition, and I'm just, again, I don't have, I don't have children in the school district, so the only time I get to see how the, what is it, the athletes on the honor row and the trainers, how is that shared with the... How is that shared with the public? For those who don't have kids in the system to say, hey, you know, our tax dollars are at work?
So I think that periodically, we bring them to the board. You've seen that in the past. We put shout-outs in our community communicators, talking about that. I think you're referring to the great news at Cedar Creek High School?
Yeah.
And their academic results, yeah, it's fantastic. So we just try to get the word out and bring them here periodically after big events, you know, season's ending, so to speak.
And I think being they were televised over, since I've been on the board, they've always went out of their way each coach to say how the academic success of the team and of the players and things like that, but usually after the season. And so, and I know we have a new newspaper outlet as well. And the last one we had kind of let us down and wasn't promoting that at all. So, anyone? Yes.
Every, every week, we have a newsletter that goes out either to staff or to families. And so there are always shout-outs in those newsletters.
But I'm just talking about, like myself, I would not know. So with those who are, have no students, as far as they're concerned, you know, the district is doing a poor job, they hear things. So how can we share this? I mean, we've got some good students doing some good stuff, getting recognition.
I was getting to, so we also put that on our district website, and we put that out on all of our social media channels. Every month, we select athletes of the month, fine arts students of the month, CTE students of the month, and that all goes out publicly on our, on our social media channels. And then we ask our partners, when we put things out, to share that. So such as the Chamber of Commerce, or Bastrop County Cares, or, you know, other of our partner, our community partners, we ask them to share that news, so it goes a little bit wider.
Is a billboard a little too much?
A billboard?
We've had one, and it wasn't popular.
We had a billboard a long time ago.
Yeah, we got criticized for wasting money.
We did.
You know what, Ms. Armstrong, it does occur to me, though, we do this, and as I said, we do it in bigger increments and clusters. And it, it does get lost a little bit that every six weeks, again, kind of like safety, we're doing this every three weeks. Progress reports every six weeks. And so this six weeks' report would get lost in the publication, if it would, because we wouldn't do it till semester, probably.
Right.
So I think that there is something of value to kind of reconsider. Maybe we do shorter increments, just to keep, keep it in front of people's minds. Because, I mean, our student athletes, our bands, our extracurriculars are outstanding. And the research shows that kids that are involved do better, and we need to talk about it.
I know a great communications and marketing director, we'll see what she can do.
Yeah, I went to the.
And I'm sure she's listening.
Beauty and the Beast, and it was, it was, it was good. And so to get that out there, and my understanding, it was run by the students, pretty much. There might have been adult supervision, but for the most part, the technology and everything.
That's great feedback, thank you. We'll see what we can do. Do you suggest how we would get that information out to tell what great things we have going on at the school?
Social media is like the best thing, I would say. And if you're looking to get people who don't have kids in the school district, I'd say Facebook, because that's like where parents, like their friends.
Next door.
That's one of the older people, that's their outlet, right? Facebook, yeah.
When you see, like, when you see something, I don't, do y'all use Instagram? I don't know what, like, when you see that on Instagram, do you promote it? Do you like it, that kind of thing? Okay.
Especially like the BISD, whenever I see something, especially about my school, like I'll share it, like I'll repost it, and then like my friends will like it and everything.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Yeah, and I know I've encouraged team building last year, and even seen Ms. Green's post on LinkedIn for job openings, and even Facebook, I'll flip them or like them or forward them. It just depends on what app or what you're, where you're looking for your information, I guess.
I know, I mean, it's difficult to reach everybody, but it's worthwhile.
We're gonna put some flyers up at the Dairy Queen, Texas Trail, at a Texas Grille. We know where the people gather.
That's right, that's the old phones, yes, we do. Thank you.
No, no problem. And then Ms. Green, would you mind getting that information to Mr. Edwards, that trustee Armstrong requests?
Number certified teachers.
Just get that to Mr. Edwards, he'll get it to us. So, thank you. All right, any more comments, questions on superintendent's report? All right, then that takes us to the consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion?
I would. D, I just have a quick question on that one.
Okay.
The, it says the board shall approve a list of certified appraisers who can appraise a teacher in place of the teacher's supervisor. When would this happen that a principal or assistant principal could not evaluate a teacher? I mean, or am I, did I miss?
No, no, you're understanding clearly. In most cases, it's when a teacher gets something that she feels or he feels is less favorable, she can get a second appraiser to come in. Or if we have a teacher, a principal that goes out, the supervisor's out on leave for some reason, we can get another person to go in and go in and take care of that. So they're like extras, if you will.
Okay, so it's not, it's not routine?
It's not common.
It's not, thank you.
I wouldn't characterize it as common, no.
Yeah, okay, okay, that was it.
And so can we leave that in the vote?
Yes, 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 I just, please, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, this time I'll entertain a motion.
Move the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, our next section, item number five, is consider approval of the revision of the CE Local X. Our presenter, Dana Egger, chief financial officer.
Good evening, everyone. So this evening, I'll be discussing some recommended changes to policy CE Local. The governmental accounting standards board, or GASBEE, has established five categories for fund balance in GASBEE 54. Prior to finalizing our audit, it was recommended that we define the new fund balance categories according to statement 54. Our current language is outdated. We use undesignated and designated, very old. And it does reference the previous, the previous fund balance language. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
How often does the governmental accounting standard standing board make changes?
So they make pronouncements annually. And we'll have a couple of new pronouncements that our auditors will talk to next month. But yeah, like unleases, you know, spittas, that's a subscription-based technology. We have to account for it differently. Every year, there's something new.
Yeah, just keep our auditors busy, right?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, any other questions from Ms. Egger?
I do. In here, it says the fund balance of the general operating fund is approximately 45 to 90 days of the current operating budget.
Yes, ma'am.
What's our, I mean, are we in compliant?
We're at 107 days right now.
How many?
107 days.
Oh, really? So we're over, I mean, which is good.
Which is good.
Yeah, we're really prepared. And these different fund names, will they be on the balance sheet, I'm assuming? Is that how they're going to be reporting the financials?
Yes, they will be. You'll see it in schedule C1 and C2.
All right, any other questions on the board?
I move to approve the revisions to policy CE Local dash X as presented.
A motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Egger. Consider approval of memorandum of understanding between Bluebonnet Trails Community Services, DTCS Recovery Program, and Bastrop ISD. Dr. Morris, good to see you, I'm Director of Student Services.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees and superintendent Edwards. Bastrop ISD is bringing for your consideration a memorandum of understanding with Bluebonnet Trails MHMR to provide a recovery support program for students who've been identified as needing assistance with substance abuse issues. This partnership is in collaboration with the Bluebonnet Trails Community Services Recovery Program. And the MOU is a renewal of our partnership with this program from 2022 to 2024. Some of the highlights for this proposed MOU include that this program serves adolescents between 13 and 21 years of age. It will begin effective retroactively September 1st of 2024 and will terminate in August 31st of 2025. And some of the recovery program services include consultation regarding substance abuse issues, care and services, ensuring access to psychiatric and psychological services in-house or by referral, ongoing coordination between mental health and substance abuse providers is given to the district, and weekly progress reports are available to a designated BISD staff member for students who are in the program. I would say that the need for this partnership is greater than ever before. As you are no doubt aware, substance abuse is a growing problem in the Austin, Texas area, and our students have been deeply impacted by this trend. As of this date, during the 2324 school year, we had 51 students who were sent to Gateway or expelled for being in possession or under the influence of THC, alcohol, or another controlled substance on campus. As of today, October 15th, 2024, the number of students at Gateway or who have been expelled for offenses related to THC, alcohol, or another controlled substance on campus for the 202425 school year is 97, which is nearly double the frequency of the previous school year. And as Amir so eloquently stated earlier this evening, "We want to empower all of our students to make responsible choices in order to shape a positive trajectory for their future." So we want to be very intentional about providing restorative discipline for these students in order to prevent lifelong addiction and increased risks of crime, poverty, and premature childhood associated with substance abuse. For these reasons, I recommend the board approve the memorandum of understanding with Bluebonnet Trails Community Services and Bastrop ISD as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Dr. Morris, how many departments utilize this memorandum of understanding?
I would say this is primarily used by the Department of Student Services, Department of Counseling, and our social workers at the secondary campuses, as well as our Gateway campus.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, is Bluebonnet Acres or Bluebonnet Trails able to keep up with, with the possible demand we have?
That is a challenge, just as seats at our Gateway campus are not necessarily commensurate with the needs, but we manage by prioritizing or triaging students who are at the greatest need first.
Is there other services in the community that we could possibly team up with as well to help with the?
I can certainly look into that. Our community partner for SHAC also runs a mental health and counseling service, so I can reach out to her and see what other options we might have to give students a different source for that support.
Okay, thank you.
So Janice Bruno, I don't know if you had a chance to meet her at Los Palms Toyota on Sunday, but she is also a contact. She has, she mentioned to me just casually at that event that they have trained probably more than 20 that are certified now. I guess they call, refer to them as SUDS certified, but substance abuse counseling certified. So she is a great resource for that. She continues to certify. And of course, that's Smithville, Texas workforce, I mean, Texas workforce, who she primarily works with, but still, that's a, it was a pretty significant number of certified folks. And then the second thing I have is, will assessments and/or counseling continue to happen at Gateway?
Yes, okay. Thank you for sharing that, and I'll follow up with you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll come share with you.
Thank you.
Why is it going to age 21? If it's normally high school, I mean, do we have that?
We do, on occasion, have some students who are continuing either at Genesis or through our Bastrop Works program.
They're that old, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Morris? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Bluebonnet Trails Community Services Recovery Program and Bastrop ISD as presented.
Second. We have a motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Morris. All right, moving along to consider approval of low attendance waiver for Emile Elementary. Chris Taywater, our Director of PIMS and Data Quality. Welcome, Chris.
Good evening, board, Mr. Edwards. I come to you tonight to request approval to submit a low attendance waiver for Emile Elementary. They had a threat that was immediately investigated by the campus that happened at the end of the day. Through the investigation, it was determined that there was no threat to the campus. The campus communicated with families that evening. But unfortunately, that following day, the campus had low attendance, which resulted in a 11.6% drop compared to last school year. So we're talking about at least 125, 130 students that were out the next day. And so this definitely warrants the campus for a low attendance waiver. And part of that process is just to get approval from the board before we do that. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Taywater?
When we send out the, the information to the parents about the threats, do, do the parents, is there a place where they can go to ask questions? Or like immediately, like if I received something like that and wanted to ask a question, is there a number I could call or somebody I could talk to?
Send out the parent link or school status?
All right, thank you.
Don't give them your personal self. Any other questions, Mr. Taywater?
And I just, the statement is, this just shows how important it is for students to understand the severity of making statements like that. It has a broad-ranging effect.
All right, any other questions? Not all, entertain a motion.
Approve the filing of the low attendance day state waiver request to TEA as per the student attendance accounting handbook as presented. This will allow the instructor on day for the campus to be excused from their average daily attendance and foundation school programming funding calculation.
Second. All right, a motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Taywater. All right, moving along to item D, consider approval memorandum of understanding between Bastrop ISD and Applied Texas Counselor Suite. We have Rayanna Ellis, Counseling Coordinator, welcome.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Edwards and board. I'm here to present the memorandum of understanding between Bastrop ISD and the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board for Applied Texas. The counselor suite is a critical tool used by school districts to track and support students' college application process. It allows counselors to view real-time data on applications submitted, providing insight into whether students have applied to colleges, completed necessary steps, and followed up on important tasks such as their financial aid. This tool helps districts meet their post-secondary readiness goals by ensuring that students are on track for college enrollment. To formalize the district's participation and ensure proper data sharing and security, we are presenting this MOU for approval. It outlines the responsibilities of both the district and the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board ensuring compliance with state regulations and safeguarding student information. Approval of this agreement is necessary for the district to continue utilizing this valuable resource. I recommend the board approve the memorandum of understanding between Bastrop ISD and Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board.
Ms. Ellis, can you just give us a, maybe an example of the way this works practically so we can understand that?
Yes, so this is an updated process. Counselors get a single login, so we have to go through our Region 13 Service Center to be granted access for each specific counselor and our college and career staff. And so on a daily basis, if we're working with a student to ensure that they have finished their application, because many of them will get in there and kind of go so far, and then it's like, it will show us their progress along with if they have completed their financial aid application, which is, it's a graduation requirement as well. So it's just a really helpful tool to use on a daily basis with our students, specifically our seniors, and showing their progress and ensuring that we get 100% college and career ready.
Right.
Is this something that the student will initiate and go to the counselor? Or does the counselor reach out to all the seniors?
We, yes, counselors have a one-on-one conference with every senior to review their graduation requirements. And then they work with our college and career center staff. There's an advisor and a counselor in those college and career centers. And they're the ones who primarily track that data. But it's really, it's a team effort between the counselors and our college and career centers to track that data to ensure every student, and it is, we're on top of it constantly.
Did I understand that correctly, that FAFSA is a requirement for graduation?
It is, uh-huh. Students have the option to complete that or opt out. But we do have to show on their transcript which option they chose.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions from Ms. Ellis? Undertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve memorandum of understanding between Bastrop ISD and Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board for Applied Texas Counselor Suite as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Ellis.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to item D, consider approval of nomination resolution for the Board of Directors of the Bastrop Central Appraisal District, BACAD. The Board of Directors The Board of Directors of the Bastrop Central Appraisal District, BACAD, is made up of members elected by taxing units of Bastrop County. The taxing units participate in the appointment process, consist of the county's school district cities, Austin Community College. The BISD board must identify its nominees by written resolution to the chief appraiser by mid-November, and a ballot will be assembled by the appraisal district before October the 30th. This is an, this is an appointment year for Bastrop, and the appraisal district cannot generate the ballot without nominee, nominations from each taxing unit. There are four current directors who have expressed interest in being nominated, David Reed, David Glass, Jeannie Ralph, Justin Benzner. I believe these gentlemen and ladies are currently on there, or not, okay, on the board. The fifth, we did get a letter resignation from Bill Archer, but he highly recommended that we nominate his wife, Sandra Archer. She is the CFO of The Groves in the Austin area, which are a chain of restaurants, and so, anyways, keep in mind, this is just, we're just nominating, we will vote, we have so many votes to spread out amongst these, or one or two or three, I believe, at our next board meeting. So this is just nominees, and I do know that Elgin is going to present one more, so there'll be a total of six.
And how many spots are available?
Five.
Five. Okay.
Right, and.
We'll get, will we get little bios before the next meeting?
We can ask for that.
If they provide them, we will forward them to you.
Okay.
Right. Any other questions? All right, this time I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution to nominate the following five individuals, David Reed, David Glass, Jeannie Ralph, Justin Bezner, and Sandra Archer, for the Board of Directors of Bastrop Central Appraisal District as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion is second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving along to information items, we have the Board of Trustees calendar of events, for information only, as well as enrollment, single budget purposes, more than $50,000. Any questions on those from the board? If there are none at this time, do I have a motion to adjourn? We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Changes up a little bit on your.
I was like, Kelly, you got slow on the draw.
I was waiting for Chris.